We have no weight room, is that right?
On the other, there's no weight room.
There's no weight room. So the weight room that the football team uses in this weight room would most likely be used primarily by football. So where does the, where does the football team currently do its weight training?
In the high school.
That's a discussion that I think you need to have the, I know Mr. Caster has talked to them. Well, one of the, excuse me, one of the reasons that came up was not as much to give the football team a weight room, but there's a lot of pressure in season, you know, like that way it was, they kind of monopolize the weight. And it's been a constant struggle here for year to year. So that's where that came from.
Barry, I'm not questioning it, I'm just curious where they currently do it.
But they do it down here.
Here in the high school, right?
Right.
In a gym area.
And we have a weight room. We have a training desk.
Two years ago.
Across the foyer from the pool.
Title 19, then you're gonna have dedicated.
That costs, we would have to add additional cost for equipment, right? This is just the construction.
But they've talked about that because that, the last weight room, you guys were, you were a lot of the work. The last upgrade of the weight room cost us just under $200,000. And we bought a lot of, but there's a lot of machinery there. Football team, according to a little discussion with Mr. Bab, they're looking more, they don't want any machines. They want weights and they want those TRX things, those bands that they can hang. So, yeah, there's gonna be costs. But I don't know what they're, I mean, we're, this is like the first glimpse of this thing. So to try to get down to what the equipment list is gonna be, I don't think they're there yet. But it's a good question.
I thought they came out on $100,000. We have to go back and check. I'm wondering about the concession areas, if that caused this building, then we would have to purchase all whatever.
You're right about the $100,000, because it was $200,000 worth of equipment that they got for $100. Because nobody was selling it. That's right.
That's exactly.
Mr. Reimer did that. You're right.
Food Service purchased a little bit of equipment last year, previous year for the snack stand that's at Poppy. We would bring some of that over. And in the snack stands that we were in, Saturday when we visited the school, they're really hot dog warmers. We already have a refrigerator. So the equipment's gonna be minimal. And I'm assuming Food Service might be able to help that back.
So Phase 1 was about, what, $1.6?
$1.4.
$1.4 in total? And this is projected to be 2.4?
If everything is selected.
All right, excuse me, you mentioned fees. Are your fees in here or is this the?
Fees are in there.
Your fees are in here? Well, where would we find those?
At the end of the page.
On page two. On page two, okay. And one last question. The bids, we plan to put the bids out in December. Does that preclude people from putting in bids due to the vacations, you know, the holiday vacations?
No, they're going, they will be advertised.
Beginning of December.
In December. It will be out to bid over the holiday and we will get bids back in second week of January. So actually giving them more time because of the holiday, they'll get closer to six weeks instead of the four that we typically have. So we're actually, number one, we would be first out to bid for the 2015 constructions season, which is good because we'll get first crack. We don't typically go out for our projects that early. We kind of have to on this one if we want to take advantage of, you know, the early April or late March, excuse me, start date.
How will we, at board level, get input from community groups who might be willing to take on some of the fundraising? Like a weight room would be an obvious thing that somebody could say, we'll lower the cost of that or any other part of this. How will we have enough time, if we're making the decision by August, at the end of August, how will we have any time to understand what the community will help us with? This doesn't seem reasonable.
Well, I think what, you know, what we could do is that on a lot of projects, we can, if we put everything out to bid or whatever we decide, then when we get the bids back and.
Yeah, we have to January.
We can decide.
Decide in February what we accept and then what we deduct. And we have, there's a meeting scheduled August 12th, Tuesday, August 12th, for an ad hoc fundraising committee. So Mrs. Schmidt and I and Dr. Bovard and, okay, Mr. Lauthler and Jeff Hollenbach and whoever wants to come to the meeting and share ideas. So that'll be the first fundraising committee meeting on August 12th.
Is that posted on the website?
So that's it, you mean the meeting? Did I, is that meeting posted on the website?
I don't know, Mr. Ferris, I'm sure he'll put it up in the next few days.
It's a public meeting. It's a public meeting.
Dr. Bovard is organizing it, so I would think.
We were only starting that.
Public meeting.
Public meeting.
Because you already have numbers in public at home.
Right.
Can you, can you tell us about the, what's it called, the soil erosion? Yeah, what we're, what's that saying? Now, what we have, I've included a proposal from TerraForm. TerraForm is the civil engineer that did the turf project, they did the bleacher project for us. And then, they don't have this already. Not to, not to the extent, we're adding a lot of impervious surface with the new building and all the paved lots, especially with a parking lot. We don't have any control over Bucks County Conservation District and what they want us to do with it. We have to do this first. We have no choice but to do a land development process. If we could find a way out of it, believe me, we could find a loophole there. We've dodged that bullet with Phase 1 and we don't have a choice. So we're talking about surveys, testing, geotechnical samples.
Why does it take six months?
The review process for Bucks County Conservation District, it goes through whatever hoops and barrels in their office. There's usually a return and request for more information and then a second submission because they'll have corrections to or an issue with the original design. It's a paper, it's been getting better lately. We actually got a really quick turnaround on the bleachers, but it wasn't that extensive. So I don't want to tell you that, well, we could probably get away with four months and have it be seven and then we're missing our opportunity to get started early. So we need to plan for the worst and we've been told six months is the norm. So, you know, I'd rather be proactive than reactive and trying to move contractors around and watch an angle. That's a hard number, that's their price to do it? Yes. That's the design, documentation, construction administration, the geotechnical investigation, the survey. Everything is included in there. We don't have to go out for any other services at all.
I can tell you that for this high school project, more than a decade ago, the, with the land development, two of the limitations were pinned on in Bucks County Conservation. I think both of them had 45-day timeframes in which to comment and move forward. That definitely keeps the clock ticking and in a, in a sense, delay this project a degree as well.
Well, I like the way you weigh this out. I like the way that we, you know, it's, it's in blocks and it's, these are your estimates, right? These are our estimates. Is that the right word, estimate? Hopeful, hopeful estimates. So, yeah, I like doing it this, looking at it this way, I think it makes, this is not, it's just a bunch of shot in the dark and we.
I said, I support it to the.
Oh, yeah. At least it's, I like it, I like doing it this way, as opposed to, yeah, the other, the opposite. So I think tonight's presentation, thank you for doing it, was just to give us like our first peek at the next, the next part of this, so.
Excuse me, do we have to approve then the 72-8? Because that has to be done.
That's the length.
So we will have to approve that at the.
August 4th. Is that what you want to be approved or the, that's the main, the main strike? We have to get the survey done before we have snow. We have to get probes done and where the building's going to go. Wherever, if we have to do infiltration beds for water infiltration on the site, we need to be able to do that stuff now rather than in the winter, frozen ground and. All right, so then that, so on your timetable here. So then the next, so from August 25th or from today, until, you have a September 1 to December 9th, and you're calling it design documentation. What does that mean again for us here for our timetable? We wanted that, wouldn't you want decisions made as to if it's gonna be bathrooms only or if it's gonna be the whole thing? That's, that's the timeframe for it, is from now through September or through December? Well, we kind of need it at the beginning stage of that September because we need to know to what extent we're gonna document this. Do we want to document everything that we talked about and then just not accept it on bid day if we don't like the prices? We can't add to later, we can only take away from. Well, I'm only speaking from here and now. I like it that way because that gives us, we know our starting point, our requirement for the toilets and we'll probably do concession. I like the way you've made that the center. So if that, I, for me, I. I'm not sure what you're at. I mean, I like, I like as everything a deduct. But that's just me, I don't know what the board members.
So just to understand, we'd be putting for this, for, I'm sorry, the 2.45 in August?
No.
And then taking away?
No, what we would approve first would be.
The toilets.
No, just the land study. It's called erosion and soil erosion. Rain build process.
Oh, is that what it is, okay.
Land build. Then we would work, you know, we would have to work on what we think we want to do. And then at some point the bid will go out. And then when we actually, same with this deal, when we finally get to the number, then we know, like, let's say they have a weight room for 275,000, it might just be 100, who knows? But at least we'll know what the real number is instead of having to, you know, we always, we've had in the past, confused budget estimate, hopefulness, all into the same sentence, so. And we would do that, you're saying by start, no later than when would you mean send that out to bid?
December.
We would.
September.
We'd like, September, because again, the decisions that you make will have some effect on the ENS process. If we don't build the weight room and we don't build team rooms, I'm gonna be filling those areas with paving or at least reducing or changing the layout of the paving.
What is ENS?
Erosion sedimentation control.
Thank you.
So if we know we're not gonna do the weight room, if there's no chance of that happening, we're not gonna have paving there, so that area will need to be treated as grass area. If it's gonna not be there but we're gonna put paving instead for access, it's now impervious surface and that changes our stormwater volume. So some of the decisions that you make about that building will have a ripple effect. Whether it's to the good as in it's not gonna be included and where fees will all be adjusted or to the bad where we have to do additional design to accommodate that piece of the building. So we need to get some, the easiest blanket statement is documented the way that it is and we just won't pick what we don't want on bid day when we know what it's gonna cost. That's the easiest thing. If you know there are some things that you want people to donate fundraising, like the weight room, get that money lined up by the February board meeting and you say, well, we have more than enough raised for that, we're just gonna keep it in. So, but we do need to have, we can't really get started on full-blown design of the entire stadium without the decisions from the board. If it's the blanket statement, do everything, great, we're done. But we still have a lot of work to do with the athletic department. What do they want in that building? We're gonna talk with Gina's Food Service, exactly what equipment? Does she have stuff she wants to relocate? What kind of electricity is required? What kind of counter space does it need? There's a lot of things that goes on behind the scenes. You guys will get the overall and the number, but all that little stuff to get us there has to happen in the meantime. So we need as much time as we can get for that to make it all fully together.
What you're, what you're telling us, if I understand this properly, that we're designing construction administration 118,900, 119,000 and 72-8 for the survey and the ENS. That's roughly 190,000 that if we knock off parts of this that don't require impervious surfaces and the rest, we're knocking down some of those two numbers, the total of 190K. Do you have any feel for, suppose we go all the way back to the, just the toilet facilities, how, how much of that could you expect to eliminate? That's, of that 190K.
I can tell you, our fees are based on the construction cost. So the project, if that, instead of being 1.2 million for a building and it's reduced to 600,000, obviously my fee gets adjusted to whatever that construction amount is. It's not gonna change a whole lot for the land development design, but it may save some site work because we don't have to do as much stormwater control, piping and inlets and that kind of thing, so.
You don't have any feel for that 72-8?
Without a design, I mean. I can't give you, I don't, I don't want to give you a number that is not gonna be right. I mean, we need to have the design done.
So you were saying that if we say have the building, you say go ahead and design it for the whole thing, but then February comes, we say we don't have enough money, we're not gonna do all that, we're gonna deduct the weight room, we're gonna deduct the officials' rooms and the storage room. And now are we going to have to pave it because that's the approval that we got for the bigger footprint of the building? Is that what you were saying? I just wasn't clear about that.
We won't have to pave it because, I mean, depending on which part of the building, it could be grass area. But we need to have the worst-case scenario documented.
We have to ask permission to have.
And, and, and keep in mind.
Okay, and then we can always scale it back, okay.
And if on bid day we decide the only thing that we're doing is toilet rooms, I'm still gonna have to go back to Bucks County Conservation District and say, listen, even though we planned for the whole building, we're only doing this and we're gonna have to get an amendment. It's not really gonna stop or slow us down, we had the worst case documented, but we can't do changes to that ENS plan without their approval. So again, the more we know upfront, if you guys can eliminate what you know you don't want upfront, it'll make it that much easier and save us time, money and fee if we don't have to do it upfront.
This is really not a related question, but who else would have access to that weight room?
That's a really good question because that came up, I, I just, you brought that up, I mean.
I mean, that really is showing a little bias there.
It, it does.
Some girls use it?
It does, but, you know, once again, it was, the thought behind it was to take the pressure off. But if we're not gonna keep the building open year-round, like, that's another consideration which we didn't really start, we shouldn't like talking about these things too much, but. But if it's gonna be, not a, if it's gonna be a seasonal building, when that is closed down in the height of the workout season, then is it really worth, is it worth it for those? And it would be the football team, primarily. My, my understanding is it would take less of wrestlers, the basketball team, the baseball team, the swimmers, old girls, soccer team, boy soccer, to have their time, like, they wait for hours to use the gym in the season. I don't know if you're used to hearing that complaint here yet.
I am.
All right, so, so that's really the driving force behind it. But if it's not gonna be heated all year round, and if it is heated all year round, and I'm just trying to, trying to think this through, that creates other issues like how are you gonna get up there? How are they gonna get there? You have to move snow if there's snow. Who's gonna be up there running it, watching it?
Supermalt, yes.
So there's like all those other things, those procedural things that you'll have to figure out. Now, that being said, I guess, without, you know, they have, we pay people to do that now anyway in the other side.
But they're all in one area. I mean, there could be two sets of employees.
Well, the football team has their own, it used to be that way, I'm not sure. But usually the football team has their own sort of coaches monitoring the team while they're in the, are waiting me out. And there's also another person that's staffing the desk, that's not the football coach.
That's what I'm saying, would this be additional personnel?
No, I don't think, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. It's a good question. I think it's a logistical thing and is it worth, you know, if it's closed in January, February, March, April, then is it worth?
It wouldn't.
It wouldn't? I mean, how can you not have heat up there? I mean, what, how do you?
I know from personal experience, the only month that they're not in there is December.
So they're in the, they're in the other way.
Eleven months out of there.
Right, they take off after the season for a month, right?
Yeah. So they're not tabbed as men, but they're in there.
So once again, the thought behind it was to take pressure off that.
I have a question with that. If it's not gonna be heated and if it won't be open in the winter, I mean, is there another place in the high school where there could be equipment put for a second weight room?
That's the big question that was, when we were doing the weight rotation. I don't know.
I don't, well, I mean, it's a question that.
The high school's pretty filled, every space is being taken as far as I know. I mean, storage spaces, it's hard to get our hands on. I had tables that I came and played by, but there's really not much available space, yeah.
So I don't wanna get too far in the bushes, but I don't know if we can keep that building open, open all year. There's gonna be heat in it, right? It's some kind of electric and water, so utilities will be there.
Are you putting showers?
There are showers.
There are showers? No.
There's eight showers.
There is, there will be one shower for the official's room. Again, this is, these are things that can be changed during the conversations and discussions, but the team rooms were for games only. They go in at halftime, they come back down. All the players would go back down, our players would go back down to our high school and use our facilities and not have to duplicate that. That is merely an empty room with benches for halftime.
I was, I'm sorry, I was talking more about the weight room.
Oh, well, weight room, same thing. They'll come up here, they'll do their workouts or routines, they'll go back down and use the facilities that we have all the way. I didn't see them on here, right?
When you say one shower, do you mean like one shower stall?
One shower stall for the official's.
And one shower in there?
There'll be one shower.
Yeah, there's one shower.
We just want some showers.
It's called the 10, what's it called, 10? Well, now we're getting to, I mean, this, tonight is not to do this. You know, I had a question about your numbers. I mean, when we started this, we talked about it, this is not any finished, like, marble, granite. What's, like, these numbers are your basic decorative, and decorative block, right? Block. Jeff and I did a tour, we contacted Sabre Ten, they just recently built a new stadium. They actually have two buildings. They have a pretty elaborate concession building, actually two concession areas. The other building is for team rooms only. The level of finishes in that building were sealed concrete floors. There are no, there's no maintenance, there's not repainting, there's not new coatings. The block is an unfinished block inside. So what we want, the goal here would be to keep, this should be at 100% maintenance rebuild, a block exterior, a lifetime shingle metal roof, depending on which one's selected, and composite metal soffits and, you know, hollow metal doors, galvanized, whatever. We should not have to go back here to do any kind of real maintenance. There's normal things that you have to do, like holes and that kind of thing, but the level of finish is, other than the outside, I mean, this is next to our high school. It should, similar color and fin, I mean, do we do the same brick that's on the high school? It makes the vote sense, but maybe we find one of that, those decorative blocks that's very similar. And we, again, that can be an alternate within. If we can't afford the brick, we'll go with the single block. So we do have some options and we'll be able to control our costs at that, on a different level, once the decision is made. So we'll do our job once we have the direction on where we're going. If we can save money by going to a single block wall and be able to pay for more space, then that's the way to go. If you know you need the room. If you don't need the room, different conversation. So we, we, the board needs to, you know, have some discussions and get some input from, what are the needs from the athletic department, community use? I know there's, this is very popular for local soccer teams. Is that something that, that the school district makes enough money from, on, from the use that there are other things that we should be thinking about adding? A bigger scoreboard. Whatever the needs are, I mean, this is the time for us to get that worked out so we can get started and do this right the first time, regardless whether it's on a small scale or the overall. So we don't wanna have to come back and, once we leave here, we don't wanna have to revisit this topic for a long, long time.
The only thing that sticks in my mind is I think we ought to pay a lot of attention to working the weight room. I understand the desire for the football team to have a, you know, anybody on the team wants the best for themselves and, but I think we really need to think that through. It's a heck of a long one.
So for tonight, I mean, I think what we're trying, the most pressing item is the soil erosion decision for tonight.
Right? August 4th, so we can discuss this.
Oh, not for August. It's August 25th.
If the August is.
All right, so we have another August 11th meeting. Maybe we go a little more, a little deeper at that meeting than tonight. All right, I lost track of that. Thinking we had to make Monday. A full four days.
So are there, are there any questions that we need answered before the August facility?
Well, I think, I don't know if anybody even looked at this or not. I mean, I took a peek at it, I just went in here and go.
Can I just make a, a comment?
We're almost there.
Almost, okay.
Let the board go first, so. I mean, there's probably gonna be a million questions, I think. But at the end of the day, it's one building. It's not, we've got such other bigger projects going, so hopefully, you know, we won't have to, you know, this won't be too rough on us. But I think we have time, so by August 25th, we can decide about that. You know, we have at least, if we didn't do another meeting, if we wanted to just have a, I mean, this is kind of, this is always a hot topic around here. So even though there's eight million other dollars being spent, we don't know anything about, this one seems to be one that people like to talk about.
So the facility managers, that August 11th?
I think it's August 11th.
Yes.
So for tonight, I think, you know, this is what we should probably study it and then, you know, see where we go. Any other thoughts for this item for tonight? We'll pick it up again on the 11th. What do you think?
I'm okay.
Mr. Thompson, right? Anybody else? All right, well, thanks, Mike, for that. And we have one more item in facilities and that is an update for Mr. Lauthler on.
On the summer projects. Give you an update on our summer capital improvement projects. District Support Center is off to a really good start. Cleaning out that old building was a project in itself. We found items that ran there from, you know, 1946. But it went very well. We were able to move the Transportation Department out, the IT Department out and the Food Service Department out, allowing for the abatement work to come in and get done. They did a quick work there and it allowed the general contractor to come in and do his demo of the walls. The local contractor did all the demo of the electric. So the building is basically at this point hollowed out, wide open and a shell. Plumbing contractor will be in soon to start doing some drain work and so on. I'm sorry, drop ceiling, building's ready to go for the GC to start skin coating the floor, laying out walls and for the plumbing coming and starting out there. So the project's underway and in good shape for now. Home and tractor field, the foundation tiers on the visitor's side are completely poured and ready for bleachers. On the home side, the upper side, they're about halfway completed, the foundation tiers. Bleachers are scheduled to be here August 4th or the first. Bleachers are scheduled to be here August 4th, or the first delivery of the bleachers, August 4th. Talking to the contractors, about five weeks to put them together. So they put us a, a, ahead of schedule of the first game up here September 26th. So right now, we're in very good shape with that project also. At the operations building, my department, we're getting an emergency backup generator. We had had board just the other day and the electric dropped into my boiler room. Generator's order will be scheduled to be installed soon. Sardell Elementary Roof Project, the whole roof at Sardell Elementary's getting replaced. Three large sections starting at the lower end, or the north end moving up, have already been removed and replaced with new roofing. Gravels stops have been put in. The middle section, they are removing this week and will continue to install the new roofing. Silo roof and masonry repairs, silo roof is completed, masonry repairs will continue to go on. West Rock Hill Lighting, it's a very large project, the whole, the whole school's getting new lighting, inside and out. Every classroom's emptied out, drop ceilings are open, new wiring is being run where needed, new lighting's being installed. The gym, the cafeteria, the main office, and the kindergarten wing, new lighting has already been installed. The fire alarm, that's part of that project, is being along with it. We're trying to get the drop ceiling guy back maybe next week to start today. We've been dropping the panels today then, that'll allow my custodial staff to start cleaning those wings. So as they move into the center section, we can clean the first section, they can move into the second section, we can clean there. Penn South, windows and masonry repairs is going really well. The original 1930s building is been power washed, scrubbed, cleaned. New windows and the front face are, have all been replaced, all the masonry repairs are done there also. If you haven't seen the building, it looks brand new compared to what it looked like a few years ago. When we did the secure vestibule last year, off to the left of it, we noticed two extremely large, I think they were red maple trees that were just kind of overgrown, just absorb the face of the building. I took them down last year and then this year with the power washing, the new windows, and the new brick, you know, all of a sudden you can see this building again and the historic value of it. Contractors are done with the front, we moved to the east side, brick repair being done and windows are being replaced. We're doing a walk-in freezer and refrigerator box for food service at Grass and Bedminster. They were both demoed immediately when school was out. Measurements have been taken and boxes should arrive soon for installation. Going back to, I hope I didn't miss anything. Yeah, missed out the other. There's. The home side bleachers are completely removed and some of the ground has already been cleaned up a little bit. The visitor's side is halfway removed already. The piers have been pulled out, and the piers that were in there were quite small, quite, you know, they just kind of picked them right out. Unfortunately, they were only, you know, a foot and a half in ground, so they were really not very stable. Concrete was very grubby. I'll do a power plane of all this, maybe some power, and I have some good pictures of, of some of that. Going back to, also, back to Helm and Field here. I did go to East Rock Hill Township and asked for a reduction in fees for permits. And East Rock Hill did grant us $3,600 off of the original cost of the fee, so I was at that meeting, I thanked them. Old Penrich thanked them very much for helping us out, you know, with reducing the permit fees. Any questions on any of the projects? Halfway through most of them, they all have, except for the District Support Center, they all have substantial completion of around August 21st, which means we can occupy them. There's been no change orders to date on any of the projects. So we feel we're, schedule-wise, we're really in good shape. Just keep moving on, weather's been pretty good for the roofing projects also.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, so one final thing, or two final things. Kathy's going to put those plans, the conceptual proposal on the website, so everybody can see it. And then Mrs. Bennett had a question?
Yes, of course, you know me. I, I, I do have a question in the timing for this approval of this project, only because of this sheer budget. And of course, you have the teachers' contract coming up this year and the possibility that sports program will be eliminated. So my question is, when is this project going to go forward when you may be eliminating your sports program? Is that a fair question to the board? I mean,
Well?
I mean, when, when comes first, the approval of this project or the approval of your con, or the budget when sports programs are going, may, may be eliminated?
Well, you're kind of coming in a little late in the mood.
Yeah, I realize that, and please, I mean,
Trying to get caught, no, I'm not trying to-
I'm new, so I'm, I'm trying to get involved and I'm trying to be conscious, I'm trying to keep my taxes down so that I don't lose my house.
I hear you, so when, when we-
So I, I wanna be, I wanna bring to your attention, because I'm a, I'm paying these taxes and I don't mind paying taxes, I just don't need to pay more taxes. And I want a good education for my children, for the children, I believe in education, but what is this football stadium doing for the general population of students?
Well, we could have that type of debate that could range out for three days.
Is there, is there another meeting that, that we, that, that I'm more-
But, so, so what we'll do maybe is try to get you caught up-
I bet perfect, that would be helpful.
Somewhere, but some of these things are kind of, once they start going, they have a little inertia. We've never talked yet, or it's not on the horizon, to terminate the, these called athletic programs yet, so.
Correct, that's true.
Talk about that would kind of be not the place here tonight.
That's true, but what comes first?
Well, like I said, you're coming in a little late, this has been raging on for, since the district, since they put the field down. So without, we have other things to do tonight, not to cut you short.
I know, I know, but-
Any day you wanna talk about it, you know, I, I hear you. Some of the stuff we have to do, some doesn't look like we have to do, I get it. So that's why we're gonna work on that and, and try to make the most of the, of the money we have.
Got it.
Just a fast, you know, the schedule, we're gonna be starting in November, next year's budget. This, this budget has already been discussed and finalized.
Okay.
You are late in game, if you wanna talk about budget, you should be here starting in November, when these decisions are gonna be talked about in May.
So this coming November will be for the following year, yeah, that's wonderful, thank you. And I know, I, I know I'm late, so I, I apologize.
Oh, no need to. Mr. Leonard?
The number for Phase Two in, in its entirety with, everything included was 2.4 million?
When you say the number, what do you mean by that?
Well, 'cause you said 1.4 and 2.4 and you didn't say dollars, so I'm just trying to understand.
So we did everything we could think of?
In Phase Two.
And if their numbers are, are that-
Everything that Mike proposed, or Enya's proposed.
Yes, and it's gonna be up on the site probably tomorrow, alright? That'll all be up.
Okay, but it was 2.4?
For Phase Two, is that-
Phase Two, so it's 3.8, including Phase One? If I do my addition right?
If we do everything that's on it.
Okay, thank you.
And the math is right.
And the math is right, right?
Mrs. Harry?
Um, I just have a question about the 1.4 million, so I made sure I got my full numbers right here. Because originally, it was 1.4 million for Phase One, but then I read a newspaper article that said it was another 800,000 on top of that. So did we actually spend 2.2 on Phase One or just 1.4?
We took the lowest bid, which was the 1.4, and that's what we, we haven't spent any of that. I don't even know if we paid anything yet, but that's gonna be the, that's, that's the contract we signed.
Right, but then the newspaper article was wrong?
Yes. Not the first time.
Perhaps.
Perhaps.
So it might be right.
I didn't see the article, so I can't speak.
Well, like, I, I would suggest then if the newspaper article's wrong, maybe the district should ask the paper for a retraction, because that's what the entire public read.
That was the headline, you're correct.
No, I read the whole article, actually, it wasn't just the headline.
But the headline was what brought you to the article.
Hmm.
Eight hundred thousand dollars in that.
Actually, I tend to read the-
Okay, let's not go off on this too far. So that would be up to Dr. Rattick and Anderson to decide if they, if that affects that, in that way, that they need to reach a retraction. But other than that, we have one more question, then we're gonna move on, because we have the rest of the committees and an executive session. So go ahead, Mrs. Earl.
During the discussion for the ticket booths, I'm just curious what you're doing in terms of loss prevention? If you've got 3,000 attendees paying $5 apiece, you cannot run $15,000 event, plus, let's say, $2 per person, that's another 6,000, that's 21,000 in relatively small bills. Is loss prevention going to be built into these ticket booths so that when those people hand the cash over to whoever takes it from them, whether it be the principal or whoever, there is a count, and it's done with proper cash handling techniques? I, I personally-
We're, we, you're pretty well versed in that.
Yeah.
So when that time comes, when we make our decisions and when the processes go in, I mean, we wanna not lose money and not have anything stolen. So I'm gonna say, go out on a limb and say, yes, we're gonna get the processes. Is that fair to say? We will have a process and a, and a, and a loss prevention policy.
Well, those are cameras, those are cash counters, those are-
We have a security thing that's gonna be coming up next year, but district-wide ones, all the buildings are done. So I don't wanna, that's really not on here for tonight, and we do have a lot of things to do.
But you need to do the wiring, you need to do, that, that stuff has to be built in.
That's a, that's a good point.
Has any of that been-
We haven't even decided what we're doing yet. So when we get to those decisions, then that will be part of it.
Okay, well, I think with the three ticket booths, that's very important.
Don't go for even doing three ticket booths, I just want-
It's important even if you do one, because now you got 15 to $25,000 in one spot, mostly cash. And if y'all don't do loss prevention, I'm buying a mask.
Get that on tape, get that on tape.
What's still no is you, just running out. Alright, so with that, we're from the next meeting's August 11th, thank you.
I think we'll recognize you anyway.
Mrs. Finance, that's Mr. Sardis.
Okay, most of ours, I think, all of ours tonight is the usual contracts and that kind of stuff. So we'll start, item one is our contract approval. And right now, I see six contracts that are on there. So hopefully, everybody's looked at them. The first one is a music production central for the spring, $752. Anybody have a question about that? Uh, the next one is the yearbook agreement, $102.78 per yearbook for North, that's North Middle School. Uh, the third one, I'm not quite sure, Project Max. I believe, I believe, but Dr. Phillips is leading.
Oh, I need the mask.
A, I guess I'd describe it as a professional development effort to be more inclusive with, I think the focus is life skills students. So it's training, teacher training towards that. Reading this, it looks like we're getting paid, is that, is that what you're saying, it's like a grant or something?
I wonder the details, some evidence of, but yeah, I know that there was some front end pursuit.
It says 5,000, we are eligible, it's a stipend of 5,000 for the next two years.
I, I didn't think it was clear, I, I know it says that in the beginning, but then it, it had some professional development dates throughout the year, which seemed like maybe they would be at the IU, but then there was, um, right, oh, well, so they have the, there are these dates, three dates in September, January, and March, although it didn't say where they were. And then, then there's, um, something at Hershey for, from August 4th to the 7th, so it didn't, I don't know, it doesn't have a cost, a total cost, there is no total cost in it. And it says the team registration fee is $500, and then you have to pay for hotels and meal and travel, and so are people going to that? And how much is it costing? And so there's no total amount. I mean, there's, the information's on here.
I know we're getting 5,000 in the stadium, we're going in the front of this project, but as far as the total cost, I'll have to get that for you, yeah?
Yeah, but, and it's very vague, it just says we're, we're eligible to receive a stipend of $5,000. It doesn't even say we're definitely getting it, because we're eligible, and it says the strippers will pay for the, for the cost of substitutes and materials. So what substitutes? It doesn't even, it doesn't even say that it's paying for the hotel and the meals and the travel for the August event to Hershey. And that's in a week or two?
Oh, yeah, I can see where you're at.
And then is there a cost to this, three meetings throughout the year?
That may be where the substitutes go. I don't know, man, I'm just speculating, but-
There's no charge for substitutes, obviously, in August, because school night is session.
Right. Well, it doesn't even, it's not even clear exactly who's going to the conference, who's going to the championship.
There, there's a team of people, I know that, there's some IST teachers, couple administrators. You're required to send certain representatives from the district.
Yeah, I'm just, the documentation, it's 26 pages, my head's strong. If we could just get a summary, maybe of, just like a one-page summary, would certainly maybe lose your, lose some cost. Is that, would that help?
Right, because all the documentation is, it seems like it's from this, like, how to lay out this program, which we don't need to know, we need to know who's going and what the costs are.
No problem, we'll get that today tomorrow.
And then we have to vote on that on Monday? Yes.
Well, if we get all the stuff, hopefully, I would assume so.
We'll see if we get information.
Okay, item four, play fit education for Silo Elementary, $1,400. Looks like it's some kind of assembly and-
It didn't say what, who was paying for it, is it the PTO or PTO is the parent group, or is it the school district? There wasn't any information.
It was not provided to us, it's being paid by the district. There was no information provided to me from Silo.
So that would be out of the school-
That's the school budget.
School budget.
Okay, can we get clarification on that?
Uh, okay, the next one is InfoSNAP exhibit, which is this.
InfoSNAP is the addendum to include collecting fees for InfoSNAP for the online program. The addendum to the, I think InfoSNAP is our online registration for incoming students. Right, InfoSNAP is our online system for registered students. We did all of our papers out, it's done online, and we also can collect fees, so that's what we'll be doing this year for that, so that we can, they have the option of using a credit card and/or a check if they so desire. And actually, this is less expensive to the, to the parents than using the previous system through the food service system.
It's a place of parents.
Right.
Or not.
Well, no, we still have Harris for food service, because that's actually tied to the food service system.
It's an addition.
This is an addition.
Okay, and then the last one is the Virgil High School, I assume that's, it looks like 142 student seats, is that? Yeah, correct.
We discussed an academic performance committee meeting in June, I believe.
Yeah.
We have several questions about it. It has a cost in here for summer school as an option, so I was wondering, how does that compare to our high school summer school fees?
that compare to our preschool summer school fees, and are we considering using this for next summer, summer school?
We've had a number of conversations about that for, particularly for course recovery, summer school that we offer, whether or not we need to continue to offer, it is slightly higher cost, but we do also have another potential option with Bridges Virtual, who does our, the full-time cyber for the few students that we have up in Spain, that's the consortium that the IU runs, so there are a couple cyber options that we could explore for summer school that I think we should develop that for next, for next summer.
So that we'll discuss that in an academic.
Yeah.
And then you can share whether it's, how it compares to, if, if we do the summer school as opposed to if we do it with cyber.
Yeah, I can compare financially, I also wanted to, I don't know how many districts took advantage of the IU's Bridges offer this summer, but let me talk to some people about how that experience went for them as a district and for their students.
In here talks about an AP speed for course, and I know we're gonna use this for my year-long history, and it says.